Good evening and welcome to the March 21st, 2023 Meeting of the Hickory City Council. At this time, I would like to ask the Reverend Cassandra Ross from Hartsel Memorial and McQueen's Chapel Methodist Churches to the podium for our invocation. I would ask that if you're able to please stand and remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance. Reverend Ross, thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you. Let us pray. God, we worship you and magnify you. The earth and all of the creation reflect your glory. During this Lent season, we're reminded that your love gave us your son as a sacrifice for our brokenness and sinfulness. We lift prayers for the city of Hickory leaders and staff as they come together to serve our community. We lift our leaders that are above them. We pray for the decisions the government officials make that they will impact our Hickory community and country. Please help our first responders, firefighters, nurses, EMS, doctors, pilots, and delivery staff against evil and dangerous situations. We pray for the bus drivers, hospital staff, nursing facilities, nail, hair technicians, construction, retail, pharmaceutical, grocery, and restaurant staff against flu, viruses, and other invisible threats that may carry to our families unaware. God, you made us and you know what our body needs for physical, emotional, and spiritual healing. Heal our bodies, heal our land, and help the military work in union with our global needs to assist other countries. Make us an instrument of peace in our families, communities, and cities. Please release wisdom, patience, compassion, and guidance on the leaders of our nation, state, country, city, and everyone attending this meeting tonight. May we strive to love you first and serve no other god than you. And we lift this prayer in the name of Jesus. Amen.
All right. At this time, I would just like to remind everyone to silence any electronic devices you may have. Item number five on our agenda is persons requesting to be heard. I'll ask if there's anyone present who would like to address the council this evening. There being no one desiring to address the council this evening, we'll move on to item number six on your agenda, which is approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of March the 7th, 2023.
Move approval, second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign? All right, the minutes for the meeting of March 7th carry unanimously. Item number seven is reaffirmation, ratification on second readings. Once again, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Aye.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign? That also carries unanimously. Item number eight is our consent agenda. I'll ask if there's any member of council or staff that would like to have any of the items removed from the consent agenda.
Move approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign? The consent agenda is approved unanimously. All right, we're to departmental reports. We have two departmental reports this evening. For the introduction of our first departmental report, I'll turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood.
Thank you, Mayor Gess, or City Council, Mr. Crone. Two departmental reports from staff tonight. The first is an update on the bond projects. We haven't talked about those at a city council meeting lately, so it thought would be a good time to update everybody on the progress. It will be presented by Executive Assistant Manager, Yade Fox.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Mr. Crone, Mr. Wood. I'm honored to be here tonight to give you an update on the bond projects. So just the first one that you all know about is the city walk. The project is complete. Currently, closeout audits within CDOT are underway. And we've been very excited. As you all know, it's been used several times a day from people in and around Hickory. It's been great to see the activity. Usually, you can even see it if you look anytime outside the windows of the building, day and night. Often, you'll see even groups that will gather together and utilize the city walk, and so it's been really wonderful to see how well it's been received. So the Riverwalk has had a lot of construction. Of course, that's over on the Caldwell County, Burke County, Catawba County side of Hickory. You know, there's a lot of work that's been happening there over at the Riverwalk, including the on-land portion that's already started to have some utilization with the construction happening here in the bridge side with the connectivity there and over the water. So I'm going to show you a photo here. This is the rendering of what was the drawing for the over-the-water bridge, and then you can see on the left side, that's the actual what's happening out there right now. Construction is expected to be finished this summer. And this is another rendering on the right side, and then you can see the actual photo of the bridge currently on the left side. The bridge is currently 90% complete. So more progress over at the Aviation Walk side. That's the near the Hickory Regional Airport to LP Friends Stadium, over Highway 321 to the Ole Art Walk, and then from the Ole Art Walk to the City Walk is the Aviation Walk. This project is 60% complete. You can see here, the sidewalk is complete from 13th Avenue Drive Northwest to the Crawdads Stadium, and then the elevated boardwalk there that kind of goes beyond the LP Friends Stadium. You can see that that's complete there. And then this is the 321 pedestrian bridge. It has been installed. Work continues with lighting, handrails, and fencing still remain, so there's still some work to be done. And you can see the other side of the roadway there has still got some work as well, so we're at 60%. This is a shot of the 321 pedestrian bridge as well. One thing I'll mention, that's also some additional work, is the City Walk extension, the one that connects to the downtown from the Aviation Walk project. That's anticipated this fall. Just start construction this fall. So it's a bit of exciting news. Over at the Historic Ridge View Walk, last Thursday, the project actually started to advertise for bids for construction. The bids are expected to be in hand about mid-April timeframe, with construction anticipated to begin in the summer. Of course, all contracts are subject to NC DOT approval. With Ole Art Walk, you've probably seen the utility poles getting moved and relocated there. There's been a lot of work over on that side. We anticipate advertising for construction this summer, as well as opening the bids during the summer months. You can see here, this is just some renderings of what's to come. Obviously, this is contingent upon DOT approval once we get a contract with construction anticipated to be started this fall. So oftentimes, people aren't able to get a chance to see what happens over at Trivium, so we wanted to touch on that a little bit today. Just as a reminder, this is the original park here, and then this is the extension that goes across the street. So work continues over at Trivium Corporate Center with the original portion and the expansion portion. This is just a great shot here of what's been happening at the original side. Everything is complete there except for some lighting work, and then, of course, there's a few lots still available that have been marketed. And then over on the east side, we have bids out right now for a sewer line into the east side of the park. This is actually private development that you're seeing here. This is some homes that are being constructed right next to the business park. So with that, I would like to thank the team and the staff for all their work on these projects. Thank each of you and city leadership and the community for the support of these projects. We're really happy with the progress that's been going on and what's forthcoming. Are there any questions? Oh, yeah, we'll make sure they can put that out.
I don't have a question, I just want to make a comment. The renderings and the actual product look almost exactly the same, so that is very impressive to see that.
Yes, sir.
I do, the one question I get asked a lot is, when will that over-the-water piece be completed? I know we had some supply, engineering delays, but...
It's anticipated this summer.
Okay, so completion this summer.
Yeah.
And that's open to the public this summer?
That's the goal, yes, sir.
Wonderful.
Yes, sir.
Good question. I think I know the answer to this, but I just want to clarify. There's been some questions about the letters on the 321 bridge, about them not being pronounced. Is that part of the work that needs to be done?
Yes, sir. Yes. So when some of the railings and some of the additional lighting is done, that's some things that'll be taken care of as well. It'll change the way that looks when you're coming from the Norah area Caldwell County side and/or going the opposite way. So yes, that will be taken care of.
And the other thing, just to, I've said this before, we've all said this before, but to say again, is that all these projects, you know, have been done by the staff without serious additions to staff. So you're doing your job plus all of this, so thank you, and thank you to everybody that's participating in this and carrying the extra weight of this. Thank you so much.
We appreciate that. Certainly, the team, I'm just happy to be a part of it, so thank you so much. We appreciate it.
I think it's amazing what they have been able to accomplish, and that 321, I drove it the other day, and I saw it clearly. I know there's a lot more work to be done, but it does look really good across 321 and down behind the racetrack and stuff like that. It's really shaping up well.
Thank you.
All right, once again, I'll turn it over to our city manager to introduce our second departmental report.
So Yade just went over about $100 billion worth of investment, probably investment in just a few minutes. And, of course, it was $40 million in bond proceeds and another 60-plus or minus in grant funds. So all this has taken longer, but everything is twice the size it was going to be, so that's been the trade-off. So, and I appreciate you saying something about the staff and the work that they've done. I mean, they're doing their regular job every day, and then this project's on top of that, so...
And also the fact that bond money has to be spent on bond projects.
Exactly.
Because we get asked that a lot.
Right. So with that, the main reason, one of the main reasons we embarked on this bond program was for the economic impact we knew it would have, and it has. And so Dave Linetti, the Business Services Manager, is going to go over some of the numbers related to the impact that we've seen so far.
Thank you, Mayor Gess, members of council, Mr. Wood, Mr. Crone. Ms. Fox earlier provided an update on the bond projects themselves, and I'm going to, this presentation is going to talk a little bit more about the private development that's resulted and been spurred from those projects. First, just looking at downtown, and back in 2018, we presented goals for the Hickory Trail project, and one of those was to pursue strategies that would lead to an 18-hour downtown that has the opportunities for citizens and visitors and employees to live, basically live, work, and play. We've had new and expanded restaurants in our downtown, retail, a lot of additional outdoor seating, more robust events both city put on and also the private sector is putting on more events. You see out at the wine shop, they're having live music outside almost every weekend that we don't have something that the city's providing. The social district provides some additional opportunities for the bars and restaurants that are a little bit not right on the square to be able to take advantage of the public spaces that we have. And more is on the way. Yade talked briefly about the Trivium Corporate Center, kind of more on the side of the infrastructure development with it. But, you know, we have, Corning has agreed to locate, you know, they located here, they became the first tenant, and then they've had two additional expansions since that first announcement, and then additional facilities by Catler, American, Fuji Seal, Guzmer, and then ITM is still on the way. Preston Ridge is kind of right in that vicinity of Trivium, and one of the reasons that apartment complex was built, you have 168 apartment units that are, or 172 apartment units, I believe, that are finished and occupied back from 2021, and then there's another 168 that are under construction right now, and you can see they're making a lot of progress out there on that site. Behind this project, in this kind of area, is an additional 295-lot single-family subdivision. You're all familiar with One North Center. This project was completed in spring of 2021 and has led to 95 units of apartment living in our downtown, and that's fully occupied with a pretty lengthy waiting list. And we have two restaurants set to open later this springtime. Then the success of the One North Center project and the waiting lists associated with it, if you've been in City Hall the last couple of weeks, you might have heard some vibrations and shaking with the demolition of the former District Court Building immediately to the east of City Hall. And that's going to be a second phase essentially of One North Center with about 100 more apartments, and then also some additional retail space and a revitalized soup kitchen building. So between the soup kitchen building and the retail space on the ground level, that's another 10,000 square feet of retail in our downtown as well as the 100 apartment units. The Pawn Shop, the former FPS Pawn, was purchased by Cranford Hospitality last year, and they are rehabilitating that into, it's an 18,000-square-foot building. It doesn't necessarily look like that when you're kind of drive by quickly on Main Avenue, but that is going to be a distillery, brewery, and have two restaurants as well. The first has been announced as Cranford Brothers Barbecue, and they're working on that. They actually just poured the curb between the fire station and the Pawn Shop property this, today. The Premier is on the west side of downtown, and that is owned by Josh Goodfellow. He operates Codex Sound, and he's had this, basically had a really nice demonstration space set up in his, where he demonstrated all his sound equipment, and he's turning that into a state-of-the-art music venue in order to kind of provide some entertainment options on the west side of town. You can also, it's a good shot to see that extension of the City Walk that Yade was talking about earlier that's been poured on the 11th Street side of town. Also, right along the Aviation Walk, the city partnered with Lake Park Associates to construct a spec building. And then that building has been sold to a company called Print Path, and I was actually just in their building yesterday. They had some delays on getting their HVAC system, but they've got that now, and they're in the midst of installing that, and they hope to be in there later this year, and they're really excited. That's a really interesting company that does a lot of state-of-the-art wraps and different things, large format printing. And then these last two things aren't necessarily completely private development, but they're non-city projects that are really directly adjacent to the trail project. This is located just south of the Aviation Walk is the new ASU Hickory Campus. That is going to be connected to the trail, though, by an extension of 17th Street Northwest. So that's going to be right there. They're accepting applications for the fall and are expecting to begin classes this fall. And then the final project I'll highlight is the Hickory Aviation Museum, which is a partnership between Hickory Aviation Museum, the City of Hickory, and Catawba Valley Community College that's going to provide a brand-new state-of-the-art facility for the museum, education space for CBCC, and possibly, and some additional restaurant space as well. So this was just kind of a quick highlight of some of the main projects. Overall, to date, that $100 million of the $40 million bonds, the $60 million in grants, has led to approximately $846 million worth of announced private investment. And then, so we use InPlan, which is an economic modeling software, to measure the project impacts. This software, they look at, we input information about the size of the project, the number of jobs, basically the amount of information we have, and then it also uses different data from sources like the Bureau of Labor Statistics and the Bureau of Economic Analysis to estimate jobs created from different projects and other potential impacts. So the construction jobs figure is based on, that's based on all of the construction activity that we have numbers for. So that does include the public, the public impact. So like the construction of the bond projects themselves and the Trivium infrastructure. So that 4,737, that doesn't mean that there's 4,000 people working in construction on any given day, but what that means is the total amount of construction activity is supporting that level of jobs for a period of one year. So obviously, you know, this construction has gone on for multiple years and will continue to go on for multiple years into the future, but that, it supports that number of jobs for essentially a period of one year. Now, the second figure is the permanent jobs. We look at that as the announced jobs from all of these projects where we have either economic development agreements or just talking, you know, just knowledge from the company of how many jobs they're looking to bring in. Then we use, we put that information into the system, and we also estimate indirect and induced jobs from that information. So those indirect jobs think suppliers, so if you've got, you know, if you've got an auto manufacturer, somebody who makes wheels or brake pads, things like that. And then also, the induced jobs are the jobs that result from, you've got 100 people at this factory that are now earning an average of $55,000 a year, as an example. They go, they eat dinner at restaurants, they get their hair cut, they, you know, they go to the, you know, they buy memberships to the Y, things like that. So that, those are the, you know, and then that creates a level of demand that supports additional jobs. So that's what, that's what we see here with that 2,066 number there. And then the number of housing units is basically the announced housing units in that kind of, in that buffer area.
And all those numbers are specific to an area of influence around the bond projects. That is not a citywide number.
Yes, and that's one thing with the housing units that I would, I would say is that we noticed when we started looking at this that a lot of the housing impacts happen more than a half mile away from these projects.
If you had to guess, or you might know how many housing units total, not just around the buffer, but...
There's about, permitted or under construction, about just over 2,000. And just one thing about that, that doesn't happen in a year's time. Those are all phased over a five, six-year period. So it seems, it is a lot compared to what we've been historically seeing, but that happens over a period of time.
And that concludes my presentation. If y'all have any questions.
The thing that stood out is the diversification of businesses that you're talking about that this is attracting. You know, that's been one of the goals of this. Are you seeing that it's getting any easier? And I know the job's not easy, but you see that it's getting easier, any easier to diversify? Is that diversification attracting diversification? Do you see that?
I think it does to some degree, yes. And I mean, I think one of the things that we're seeing is these bond projects have made our life a lot easier in terms of selling the city and selling the market. You know, when you're talking about developers from Charlotte and coming into town, they're amazed at the amenities and the level of the quality of life that we have here to offer in Hickory compared to a lot of the restaurants that we have here compared to, you know, places in Charlotte and other larger cities. So that's, we see that a lot when we're talking to different companies.
And I would say case in point, one of our biggest new developments that we're going to be seeing more of is Microsoft. That wasn't part of the initial Trivium package, but I think because of what we've done, we've became a really positive location.
I guess being the new kid on the block, it's interesting to me with the 2,066 jobs that were permanent. Now, are the majority of those who have the permanent jobs are the ones who live already, residents of Hickory? And what's the percentage of those who might be communitying?
That's a, that's a good question and not one that I necessarily have. There's not an easy answer to that. We are, we are seeing growth of people migrating into town, but we are, you know, we're seeing, you know, a lot of those, a lot of those jobs will be, will need to be taken by people who are current residents of the city.
And one way of getting at that is, I think there's just over, the city's 43,000 population, I think, it was just over 20,000 are employed in Hickory out of the total jobs in Hickory, which is maybe 60,000. So it's probably that same kind of mix of city residents versus folks from outside. And we have a lot of people from the region that come in every day, so that's probably a good, good measure of what the types of people, the location that people are coming from to take those jobs.
Well, that could happen, take them to the jump ups.
Yeah.
Now, those numbers are not counting any of the Microsofts.
Correct. That's outside of, right.
I don't know for sure anybody's really, I bet they really liked our water.
Yeah, yeah, that was one of the selling points for them.
And, you know, the fact that, you know, I know jobs, 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 we hear it all the time at all levels of government, but the Microsoft project is exciting because it's tax-based, that doesn't require a lot of jobs. And we, that's another part of that diversification where we continue to generate tax base without, you know, having to employ people because we can't build, you know, the struggle now is building the jobs that are open.
And one point for Dr. Freeman, when we incentivize, when we, the city provides incentives, those incentives are given only if they pay above the median county average wage. So it's like $45,000. So they have to, and most of the ones we incentivize are beyond $45,000. So we don't incentivize the lower-paying jobs, just to try to encourage, you know, higher-paying jobs so folks can have a higher quality of life.
I can't help but remember back when we were losing jobs and we were visiting other municipalities to see what they were doing, and almost everyone we went to, they were doing the trails. And I remember several discussions that we had about the risk related to that, and we saw it work in other places, and we were concerned would it work here. I think that we've seen tremendous successes. I know our goal all along was to have economic impact. We've certainly seen that, and our three goals of growing jobs, growing population, and growing tax base, we've seen tremendous successes in all of those areas, and I think they're all directly related to the trails and the bond projects. So we recognize the risk, but certainly have seen a reward based on that risk that we saw and that we took. So huge success, and we want to see it continue.
And I did have to say that the citizens backed that. I mean, we, as you say, we visited, we put it to the citizens. They saw the future of what we could do, and so I really want to thank the citizens of the city for believing that we could do this and it would work, and it has shown that it's working.
Kind of an interesting twist of fate. One of the cities we looked at when putting all this together was Rock Hill, South Carolina. So they've heard all that we've got going on. They came to visit us and get to see. And the folks from Danville, Virginia, Hendersonville, Statesville, and others have all made visits here, doing what we did, trying to put all this together years ago, still on our best ideas.
And I think one of the important things is that we're getting more diverse. We used to be just furniture and textiles, and now we're getting tremendous amount of other industries for the area. And I think that's helping our growth tremendously.
All right, we just got to figure out what's next.
Well, we'll talk about that at our retreat.
At our retreat, yeah, we'll, we'll, more to come. Let's just say that.
Of course, I hope we make that available to citizens to see on our website.
Yeah, we'll do that.
That helps answer a lot of questions. Just give them a link.
All right. The next item on our agenda is appointments to boards and commissions. I'll ask if any member of council has any appointments they would like to make.
Mayor, I do.
Okay.
I'd like to appoint William Bill Richter to the Public Art Commission.
All right.
And I have one as well. I'd like to appoint Wesley Christopher to the Public Arts Commission.
All right. We have two. Any others? All right. I'll make a motion that we accept both of those appointments.
Second.
All right. We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That carries unanimously as well. All right. Is there any matters not on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
All right. General comments by council or staff? I think...
I'll let everybody else go first.
Okay, you want everybody else to go first? I, nobody, I have, I have just one. I saw the announcement today. They made a public announcement, Metro Neck announced that they have now 100% fiber-optic internet that is officially rolled out to residents and business in the City of Hickory. Specifically, I think that is LR Boulevard corridor and some of the Kenworth neighborhood. So, that's the first live internet that they've got. And obviously, there'll be a lot more to come throughout the rest of our city. Anybody else?
Well, I'm just going to announce I've got a new grandson.
Oh, congratulations.
Saturday morning at 3:14, Dave Robert Seaver.
All right. How many has that made?
Three.
Three. All right.
All boys.
All right. All boys.
I do want one announcement. I have a grandson that just became an Eagle Scout. He was that early, that's the first one in our family.
Congratulations to him as well. That's quite the honor. That's quite the honor.
Yes, it is. We're, we're real proud.
What was his project?
It was steps, major steps at the Church of the Ascension in the back of the...
Oh, I saw those.
Yeah.
All right. All right. We're saving you.
All right. We're saving you for last. I've got sad news with good news. So, after 12 years with the City of Hickory, Sarah Principe will be leaving for another job opportunity. She's our Legislative Affairs Analyst. She's done a great job with that. But she's going to work for Lumen Strategies, doing the same thing. And we will be contracting with them for her to provide the same service. So, but after 12 years...
There she is.
And we're sad to see her go, but she's, she's going to go.
Wait, wait a minute. Don't we have to vote on that? If we, if we have to vote, she may be staying.
So, congratulations to her. She's going to stay in the area and, but she'll still, she'll still be, you know, serving as a, and we used to contract for those services years ago. So, she knows us and, you know, what our interests are, and so, she'll continue in that capacity and just in a different company.
Well, we certainly, we certainly want to congratulate Sarah. She will be greatly missed. I call upon Sarah quite frequently. We've made a couple trips to Raleigh and other places, and she always helps to keep me up to speed in everything going on in our legislature, legislation and government affairs. And that's certainly an important role. So, I'm glad to hear that you'll continue perhaps in a contract-type environment and continue to lead and guide and direct us in that direction. So, it's been a pleasure working with you, and we wish you much success in your new ventures.
Thank you.
It's hard to believe it's been 12 years.
I know. I didn't think she, I mean, she's only, what, like 21 years old? So, how's she been here for 12 years? Now, 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 wait a minute. How many Sarahs do we have now? We're going to be, we're going to be down a Sarah. So, we're looking for a Sarah. Yeah. Because it's always like Sarah. So, well, which one? We've got like 12 of them.
We're also cluttered up with Millers, too. So, we've got lots of Millers.
Yeah. We'll, we'll stick with Sarahs. How's that?
That's right.
All right. All right. Is there any other comments or questions or concerns from staff or council? All right. All right. We have a motion to adjourn. I'll second that motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we stand adjourned. Thank you for your attendance tonight at our council meeting. Oh, wait a minute. Council needs to stay for a picture. We got to do our picture. So, don't, don't, our council and...